That's fine. You can start without them.
All right, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the December meeting of the Board of Managers open. I'm looking and all of us are here. Board managers are all present. Next, I'd look for an approval of the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, go ahead.
So the one, I'd like to move the 2024-91 to an action item that's currently consent.
Okay, so that is?
Item 6A6.
Is it 66? Is that what it is?
Yep.
It's six, item number six, and you'd like to move that into action?
Yes.
Okay. Any other changes from any of the other managers?
You got a second?
Second. Okay, there is my second. I don't hear any other changes, so at this point.
Question whether it says, "Consider approval of item 7J for new business." I believe that's an update versus considering approval of the.
Yeah, it's, it should be changed to consider extension of permit 2024-78.
Which one's that?
That is 8J. So it's to consider the extension of permit 2024-078. Okay, any other changes? Yes?
I'm president. I'd like to also just clarify if agenda item 7E needs to also be updated?
7D?
E.
C.
Yeah, that can be, that can be removed.
So item 7C is remo- E?
The one for City of Chanhassen.
Oh, yes.
Court of Agreement.
Okay.
Resolution 2469.
Okay, so item 7E is removed? Thank you, Bonnie. Anything else? All right, if not, all those in favor with the agenda as we've discussed with the changes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Next, we are on to the matters of public interest. Welcome to our board meeting. Anyone may address the board. Speakers will be acknowledged by the president. Please raise your hand with the app if online. Wait to be recognized. Please state your name and address for the record and limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Am I looking for anybody here? I have, I don't see a hand up. Is it?
Still.
Okay. Mr. Cook?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Hopefully it'd be brief. Again, I must object to the holding of this meeting. My opinion, it's an illegal meeting. There are no duly appointed members as required by 103D.311 subdivision 3C. I view no action pursuant to this meeting is legal or binding on the district. I put all the participants on notice that they're proceeding at their own risk of legal action. Further, point out that no budget therefore has been duly adopted, no future expenditures are legal, and it's my position that illegal dispersments of the district's funds are subject to recoupment from their recipients under applicable state law. And then besides that, I note that when this agenda, according to my records and I printed it out, there were a number of missing items that were listed on the agenda. The documents are not available. And according to my records, no notice of any revision of the agenda or additional documents were provided. While that may or may not be legal, I don't think it's an appropriate way to conduct oneself or provide information to the public, especially given that at least I have provided notice that I want the notice of all meetings, et cetera. So one, if it's not illegal, I think it should be changed in that regard. And the other comments I make is that again, it's the copies of, for example, application for payment number one, I believe it was number eight. They have language about retainage that, as far as I know, it was agreed that you're going to change that, that all retainages would be held until full payment and determination. I couldn't tell when these actual, the projects for which these funds or payment requests were made, whether that predated our policy or not, but I bring to the attention that we previously agreed that retainages would be held until completion of all, all of them. And with that, I am finished. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will proceed forward with the reading and approval of the minutes. I'm looking for a motion to approve the October 2nd Board of Manager Workshop Minutes.
But I have an edit.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. And what's your edit?
Page one, Isaac, spelled, and the first one, line seven, needs to have a K instead of a C. The next line is mine. I think that was all I had.
Okay, any other? I don't see anything else. So on that, all those who are in favor of approving the October 2nd Board of Manager Workshop Minutes with the one change, please say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Next, the November 6th Board of Manager Workshop Minutes. I'm looking for some sort of a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the November 6th workshop notes.
And a second? Thank you.
I had an edit.
Yes.
I don't think you were begging, but it says you were. Line 24, Patterson said she was state at the begging of, should be beginning.
Yeah, beginning. Thank you so much. Any other changes? If not, all those who are in favor of the November 6th Board of Manager Workshop Minutes with the change, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Next is the November 6th Regular Board of Manager Workshop Minutes.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the November 6th Regular Workshop Meeting Minutes as written.
Thank you. There is a second. Any other changes?
On page eight, line 256, says noting Steve Robinson. I believe that should have been Robertson.
Okay. Any other changes?
Somebody else has something different. That he, he was on the Board of, but he's represents Department of Health, so I'm assuming it's Robich.
Okay, any other changes? Sounds like none. So all those who are in favor of approving the November 6th Regular Meeting of the Board of Managers, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Next round to reports. Receive the Citizens Advisory Committee report. Grab a mic.
Oh, I was gonna step up next to.
Sit right here if you want. Anyway, I'm Terry Jorgensen, the other TJ around here, and I'm a CAC member. Here are your little quick items. We had a great learning presentation and there's a couple of board members or last week or a few weeks ago. And I encourage you to look at YouTube recording of it. It was Gary Carley, Witter, the Forest, Forestry and Natural Resource Supervisor. She's really good, talented, really enthused and really ready to work with the watershed and, yeah, and CAC. So very energetic, is a really good report. And one thing I know is she talked a lot about, of course, all the natives bringing the, getting the parks back up to speed with the native findings and getting rid of buck door. And you probably see some more burns, you know, more burning than you have in the past. It's a little preview. Item number two, and the CAC members wanted to bring to the board, not for permission, but just to let you know that we're kind of encouraging everybody to go to other watershed meetings. And Liz like provided a list of, you know, websites and stuff. So we'll facilitate that happening for this and that. And then they can come back and report and see if we can learn some things or get smarter and do things more efficiently. And one other item, three, you know, we have a running list of pending priority motions. And this is off the list that Bonnie kind of helped just maintain. And that one that we wanted to bring up again is recommend revisiting definition of steep slopes due to impacts from climate change. And something to maybe put some, you know, allow the, let's step some time for that. That's up for you to discussion, August. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you, Terry. Uh, next we have the November staff report. Does any board manager have any questions? Are there any comments?
President?
Yes.
Can I respond to the CAC before we? I just wanted to respond to who requested that we revisit steep slopes. I want to know if that's something that there would be something the CAC could help with, or we are looking, is if that's on our plan for coming up?
President Patterson, Manager Nelson, that will be part of the overall rule update. And when we go through the rule update, we'll bring it to the TAC, the CAC, the board, and other stakeholders that are involved in that. So yes, the CAC will be involved in that. Will be involved in.
Potentially, name line for that, of when they could expect to see their input requested?
President Patterson, Manager Nelson, that really will depend on the plan itself. I don't want to start writing rules and then have to change them all again, so.
But we could start getting some education on some.
We could certainly start looking at that. But, you know, as far as what will be our definition of steep slope will be incorporated into rule, so.
What came up during the Noble Hill thing was.
I'm sorry?
What came up during the Noble Hill project was, sounds like there's more than one way to determine how sleep, if the, how the stability actually is recorded.
Absolutely.
Sounded like there was a 3D versus a two-dimensional approach.
Yes.
A lot of us were really interested in having the most sophisticated and.
3D modeling of our slopes, so it would be a very expensive undertaking. I think there'll be easier surrogates to use to, to really qualify where we want to protect, because ultimately it's going to be what is it that we want to protect and how do we want to protect it? We wanted to say it was 4% slope that, you know, we could, as long as we could justify it. So will we bring, think, we'll probably like to mirror as much as possible what Lower Minnesota is doing so that we have that unified front.
David.
So another caveat is if you have an existing slope and you're building close to it, that's one thing. But if you're digging out on one side and then filling in on the slope side, then that slope is not reinforced with plants that will help hold everything together. So it seems like we need to qualify that, you know, we're talking about an established slope and a distance from that, rather than, you know, hey, they just graded it and now we've got all this loose play and soil and stuff on the edge of the slope where, you know, nothing is really holding it.
President Patterson, Manager Ziegler, yeah, you're heading out a lot of the nuances that we run into, you know, we've, we've talked about, well, can you, can you break up a slope and then therefore say it doesn't meet that criteria? So yeah, there are a number of things that we will need to work through on steep slope and when and how it should be applied.
So I actually have this on my list to discuss for the tenure plan. All of us are supposed to be thinking about the tenure plan and this deep slope section is something that we need to address, I think, in that plan. So that's how I'm looking at it.
Manager Patterson?
Yes.
As a former CAC member, this was something that I thought was important. But what I was hoping for from the staff, if that's the thing, is what benchmarking have they already done? You talked about Lower Minnesota having some good, I know there's a lot of other rules, but it seemed like something that CAC members could identify different rules, maybe pull that information together. But we don't know what you have and what you don't have.
President Patterson, Manager Nelson, yes, I mean, it would be good to review all of the cities' bluff ordinances. Bloomington is the only one that I know right now who extends their bluff rule to things that are not immediately adjacent to a feature, a water feature. That's mostly other cities base it on the DNR definition of bluff land. But Bloomington has, has modified theirs. So yeah, that would be good. And are there other states or other communities outside of Minnesota that have done something? You know, and for that matter, there, there are a couple of ravine studies that have been done in the area that could be dusted off and looked at.
So is that something that we as a board could ask the administrator to pull together a list of what would be helpful? Like the CAC could actually do some benchmarking and get some information on steep slope regulations? Like identify what they have.
You, you're very welcome to make a motion. See if you get a second and some approval.
I'd like to make a motion that the administrator gather, at least make a list of the information they have in-house and the, then the CAC and provide for the CAC and the board, so then we could identify future benchmarking opportunities.
I'll second.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions? I think for my part of it, I would rather wait until I knew how the priority of this was compared to the many other things that are in the tenure plan. I think that steep slopes are important, but it isn't, I'm not certain that the money, the time, the effort should go into it now before we've decided where we're going to be putting our time for the staff. That's how I look at it.
My idea was, we have Lower Minnesota, we have Bloomington's information. That's, I expect this to be a very small work effort. As I stated it, it was that an opportunity for maybe the CAC to maybe step up and provide some like work.
So I know Freshwater had a complete, Carrie Jennings did a complete study on this. And I think that was much more evolved and much more thorough. So I think there's a lot more material out there than just a couple of things. I don't know.
Madam President?
Yes.
So what, this sort of gets into kind of a gray area that I've never really been clear on. But what is the role of the CAC regarding, you know, how far they go into doing the watershed's business? And, and are we, are we pushing, and not that this isn't a good thing to have somebody do. And I think from my perspective, we need to find more meaty kinds of things the CAC can, can do that we can't do as a board or staff. And I'm not sure that where this fits, I guess is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Both in terms of the authority and the responsibility of the CAC versus what staff and the district does.
Okay. Any other comments?
Um, I have a quick one. And basically, I kind of have a concern too that we talk a lot about the rule changes. But is there an official list of what we want to review for rule changes? Because the steep slopes is, is one of them. But there's others and, you know, we, we talk about them every third or fourth meeting. But, you know, I don't see a official list. And obviously, we're doing it as part of the tenure plan, so it isn't something that's going to show up in a couple of months. So, you know, it's easy to lose things if you don't have a list. So maybe I would amend the motion to say we should have a list of things that we're going to look at as potential rule changes.
And do we have something like that, Terry? I mean, I know at home I have written up of things I'd like to try to address, just been waiting to get to the tenure plan.
President Patterson, Managers, I have a very informal list of, referred to as a parking lot of ideas that I have heard from the managers, yes. So some of it pertains to rules, some of it pertains to projects or policies or programs. So yeah, I, I have a list of things that have been brought up.
I think we should probably vote on the motion, right?
Manager Petersons? I feel like the additional list of rules seems outside the scope of what I was looking to do with just a very, a simple steep slope definition benchmarking possibility.
So that didn't officially get added anyway, because no one's second.
Okay. I just, I believe it's a good idea, but it seems outside the scope of that.
Patterson.
Hopefully very small.
Yeah.
President Patterson, Managers, I believe what I'm hearing is relatively minimal for staff time involved. It's asking the CAC, giving them a list of possible resources or they could look for existing bluff ordinances and that we might consider as we move forward. So it really is up to, do we have the volunteers on the CAC that are willing to put in the time to do that?
Okay. Okay, are we ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. So it's four to one. All right, we are on to the November staff report. Is there any questions or comments from the managers on the staff report? Hearing none?
I'd like to make a motion to receive the staff report.
I think we want to try to do these all at one at the very end this time.
Yep.
No, I think that we don't have, we don't have a need for resolution for something like this, accepting staff reports. So we'll just get through all of them and then accept them all as a whole.
Uh, so the next item is the November Administrator's Report. Any comments, questions on that?
President?
Yes.
I just, so I just read it before the meeting here and it's a nice list that, it gives, it gives us another perspective, kind of the balance point of all the staff's work in addition to oversight. But one of the things that I thought was really interesting was the timeline estimation for having, or having to deal with the issue, you know, that's being worked on currently. So I thought it was, everything we're looking at now is kind of like, here's what happened last month. Here's what we're working on today. Kind of gives a view of some of the future things that are coming down the pipeline, which I thought was nice.
Thank you. For my part, when I read through it, I thought, oh my, there is an awful lot. The width of what's in there and the breadth of all of that is a lot to remember. So I was thinking, it's, it's a very good idea that you actually have that so that we can kind of see what the work progress and what items you're currently, because it's, there's a lot. There's just a lot.
Others and managers, yeah, I did almost as much for my benefit as.
Uh, okay, anything else on the Administrator's Report?
So refer, you refer here, this is under wetland management. Continue updating MinRAM access database.
Oh, you're on the staff report?
Yeah. Am I going too far?
We're on the Administrator's Report, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I can answer the question. What's your question?
Well, they're doing this assessment thing, right? So is it, but is that connected to MinRAM still? Or is that going to be some, I got the feeling it was going to be named something different and be something different.
President Patterson, Managers, the MinRAM is part of our assessment, but it's just a part of that assessment. We have pumped the brakes a little bit to wait for the HGH assessment to be rolled out to see if that'll serve our purposes.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
In less than nine or 10.
Okay, yes.
I have one question slash request on really all of the reports. You know, they contain the historic information and the new information, which is great. But if we could make it so that the new information is a different font or a slightly different color, that would be easier to, you know, because otherwise you end up reading through fairly long section that you've already read.
It's really good stuff to read.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
I mean, we could give you a strike-through version, but.
No.
Strike-through, but a different font or, you know, something. Like this is the new and this is the old, so we know. Yeah.
That just consolidates it, so it's easier for someone else to read it.
But I like the history too. I mean.
I'm not saying get rid of.
Yeah.
I'm saying keep it. I think it's important.
Yeah.
But it's also important to know, you know, what just happened.
The new part, the highlighted part.
Okay, anything else about the Administration?
President Patterson, Managers, there is one more thing I would like to add. I'm trying to find the actual numbers for you. So I had the LaSalle-Sams Outdoor Edge Council meeting yesterday? When was I there? Day before yesterday. And the Office of Management Budget came out with their new numbers. And so the grant awards were adjusted accordingly. So ours went from 1.982 to 2.06.
Oh, that's.
We went up. That's fantastic. That was very wonderful.
But we still have to get the legislature to.
So we gotta get the legislature, but the funds are allocated, so I'm still very optimistic.
Super. Uh, okay, anything else on the Administrator's Report? Not seeing anything. We are on to the Engineers' Report. Any questions?
Yes. Before we go to the Engineers, I think we missed the Personnel Committee report.
Uh, it's not on here, at least on mine.
It's on mine. The Minister.
The one you gave me doesn't have it on here.
Mine is, I called the older one. It wasn't on mine. I remember these.
Yeah, it's on the website. I, I can give you a quick little update. We went through the benefits package. It's also in the Administrator's Report as well. Ken, I want to say Ken Burns, but it's not Ken Burns. Ken Burns makes great documentaries. Ken from North.
Risk.
North Risk Partners came in and presented to us. Thank you. The.
Ken Carlson.
Yes, the bottom line is health insurance is going up 16% over what it was last year, which amounts to $14,000 roughly. The rest of the insurance is nominal, changes in the, in the hundreds total for the annual budget. And then the League of Minnesota Cities' property and casualty is going down. We do have adequate budget. I went through and looked at it to make up for, it's, it's $10,000 beyond what was budgeted. I'm not suggesting we change the budget at all. I think it can be easily accounted for by paying intern salaries out of the funds in which they are working in. So data collection, out of the data collection fund, et cetera. Well, but this will definitely require us to look at it next year more closely and what we want to do with it. Because these are, I don't foresee them not increasing at these same rates. So we do have, Ken is looking into a, maybe you can explain it better than I can.
So how we receive our benefits is we're in a very, very large group of small employers. So they combine all of us together and the risk is taken for the entire group. We have the option of having several insurance companies just bid on the exact number of employees we have with their ages and their genders. And so we consequently might receive a better price because we are better than the risk of all of the small employers put together. So we were supposed to receive something back, I think, last week, and we haven't gotten anything back from Ken yet. But it could be that we're going to get a better, better pricing. We also would be bid out to more health insurance companies. So rather than Health Partners, then there's a line of health. So rather than Health Partners, then there's Alina Health, there's Blue Cross Blue Shield of Minnesota, there's Medica, I believe. So we'll have to see what all of that turns up once we get something back from Ken.
Just done, the deductibles and the consequences.
Right, and I think if you read my report, you'll also know that most insurance companies are, or most employers are attempting not to raise rates for the employees. They are attempting to fiddle around with the plans to see if there's any way that they can kind of get more control of the costs. Some of them are increasing the deductibles, but many of the others are looking at exactly what the plans cover. And if they take out this particular thing, well, there'll be a cost savings for that. And so I just wanted to give that to you as a sort of a background to consider when we're thinking about the watershed in comparison to other employers and know that we pay for an employee's healthcare fully. And the other watershed districts do not do that. We have them pay for the price of their family coverage if they have family coverage. So we have a nicer benefit than the other watersheds here in the Twin Cities.
Senator Peterson, is there an annual deductible to the health insurance?
Yes, there is. There is.
President Peterson, manager, and also, yeah, it's $2,400 for single, $3,600 for family.
So it's not a high deductible plan. I mean, we're not saying, okay, $10,000, because many high deductible plans that employers have, they give you an offering for that. That's not what we think would be competitive. Okay, I think that's it for HR, yes? Okay, so now we are on to the engineers' report. Do we have any questions or comments? Nothing for Mr. Sobek? All right, now we're on to the regulatory report. Any questions or comments on the regulatory report? I think Matt doing the regulatory.
We're back.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, no questions? Now, we're looking to confirm a board rep for the December 16th CAC meeting. Anybody interested?
I'll go.
Yes. Manager Duval, if you. And now I would entertain a motion to accept all of the reports.
I'd like to accept all of the reports listed.
Thank you. Thank you. And all those who are in favor of accepting all of the reports as a whole, so you say aye? Aye. Opposed, none? Okay, we are on to the consent agenda, which is items I through item five. We have moved item six to new business. Any, I think we just really need a motion to accept this unless anybody has any questions.
Yeah, motion to adopt resolution 2465.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 24-065.
Right. I need a second. Thank you. Okay, all those in favor of adopting resolution 24-065, who say aye? Aye. Opposed, none? All right, now we're on to new business. So the first item will be the permit that is 2024-091 for Highway 5 Business Center that was pulled. Someone has a question?
I do. You know, it's, it's one of those where it's truly a new development. It's a forested area next to the Highway 5. And they're removing all of the trees. And they're not adding back any trees. And they're grading the whole property when they're using like 80% of it. So. Sorry, my, my wife's chili is, is acting up. But anyway, the question I have is kind of for future consideration on rules. This doesn't break any of our rules. But if you think about it, removing 100% of the trees and replacing none seems like something we should have a rule against. And grading property or land that's, you know, more or less native prairie. It may have been graded before, but it's been like this for, you know, 30 or 40 years. You know, it seems like those are two different things that we should consider when we're writing our new rules. Is, you know, minimizing disturbing of forests and native prairies. And if you're going to take out, I don't know, I'm going to say 500 trees, maybe you should plant 500 trees. You know, maybe they don't have to be, you know, full grown trees, but, you know, something in the six to eight foot tall would be maybe big enough so the deer don't just munch them down the first year. So that was my comment.
I'd like to follow up on that because if you're looking at the water cycle, which I am, you just disrupted the water cycle, which is water quality. I mean, that cycling and the transpiration and the, and the storage and good soil organic matter is part of the picture and is part of where we're trying to go, I thought, with the ecological approach, so.
Is this it?
Yeah.
It really hurts to see that go through, frankly.
Yeah.
We got to figure out a way to incorporate that.
So Terry, am I wrong in assuming that part of the issue here is the city, the municipality is the one who has the say in the trees and the replacement of trees when they're removed, correct?
President Peterson, managers, yeah, they're the zoning authority, so they get to say the density that's on it. We have internally discussed, you know, is there a way to account for the abstraction or some other metric in our rule to do that? So I do think it warrants a very robust discussion along with the board of how we can, how we can capture that loss.
In other words, this needs to go on our, our new 10-year project list for items we have to look at. Absolutely.
This is.
And obviously we'll be working with the cities when we rewrite our rules, so. We maybe need to soften them up ahead of time. So, President. Yeah, question. So when are the rules reviewed? Is it a matter of when we decide or are they on a time cycle or how does that work?
And President Peterson, manager, develop, we don't have a set schedule. We do review them periodically. When we adopted the rules in 2015, we changed them in 2016, 2017, 2019. We have not changed the rules since 2019, Scott, right? Wasn't that the last?
There was a small revision in 20.
Yeah, okay. So we have been, you know, we've been waiting for the plan to come and, and we're here. So I, I do believe once we have missions, visions, values and our goals, we can start the rule, we don't have to have a completed plan to begin the rules. We just need to have one of the mission, vision, values and goals of this board so that we can tailor the rules to that.
It seems like over time, as the watershed has developed, fully developed, now we have a different view of the watershed. And as we've been discussing at past meetings, we are trying to take a more comprehensive look at it. But we don't necessarily have the options we had when it was not developed. So it seems like we need to rethink all of that and that needs to be a big part of it. Otherwise, we're just dealing with variances and exceptions and it doesn't appear that it tracks into anything strategic addresses.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just wanted to point out, I, I think the discussion was assuming that all the trees are removed and there's no tree replacement. But the city of Indian Prairie has a tree replacement ordinance. I think you referred to the city's jurisdiction. And I think Scott has, there's a detailed tree replacement plan. Is there?
President Peterson, manager Ziegler, has part of their plans that they did go through and do a tree inventory. They talk about the trees that they're removing, they're talking about trees that they are remaining. And then they have their tree preservation calculations provided. And as part of that, they will be required to replace 506 inches of trees. Now, where those tree replacements will be placed, they did not provide that plan for us, but the city will be requiring replacement.
I did take a look at the list. There's an awful lot of ash on there. A lot.
I would also add that this entire area was a staging area when Highway 5 was reconstructed and widened. So it is, it is heavily compacted right now. So a lot of what's there is it's, it's volunteer trees after they then not let it go.
Madam President?
Yes.
So based on what we went through with the workshops, bringing people from the city in, do you have any sense of, I mean, can we kind of build on it and that kind of framework to start to? I mean, so they always have a tack that, that comments on everything and we've always seriously taken it, you know, taken their comments very seriously because we got that, we need that cooperation and we want to have good partnerships, so. Is that something we could start?
Again, I would like to get through the mission, vision, value and goals, but yes. I think the key is to take that Venn diagram and find out where we overlap and, and maximize that benefit where we can.
The neat part of those workshops where the, so if one city's doing something exceptionally well or making progress at least, and they're bringing it up, that reaction from people in other cities, it was a positive catalyst, I thought. So it's just a good way to try to get that conversation before we're just dealing with the tech totally.
Yeah. So one last question, Scott. When I read it, it said, you know, that they were disturbing the same number of acres as there is. So was I wrong on that or?
No, you're correct.
Okay.
I think there's a few trees that they will be preserving. Some of them that they, they surveyed and located are technically outside of the property that they own. So that's why they can show some of them in their list as remaining. You are correct, though, that most of the site is being graded. There's a little bit in the southeast corner that they're not touching.
Okay.
But it was highly compacted, you're saying?
Correct.
So it's not total loss.
So I'll make a motion to, to approve permit 20-24, I'm sorry, 2024-078?
I think it's 91091. Yeah.
It's just very last one right here. Okay. Yeah.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of approving 2024-091, please say aye. Aye. None opposed? Next, looking at accepting the November's treasurer's report and approving payment of the bills. Do I have a motion?
Yes, you do. I move we adopt resolution 24066.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions? Hearing none? All those in favor of resolution 24-066, accepting the treasurer's report and approving payment of the bills, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, none? Provide opportunity for comment on resolution 24-067 confirming final budget and levy for 2025. Do we need to have a public area here for any comments? Or is it just we've not changed anything, so?
President Peterson, managers, we just have to make the opportunity available for, for individuals from the public who wish to speak on it, but it is not a public hearing that had to be noticed in the true sense, so.
So am I looking for anyone who would like to make a comment? Anyone like to make a comment on the confirming the final budget and levy for 2025? Okay, hearing none? I don't believe there's anything else we need to do at this point. So, next. Consider adoption of resolution 24-068, appointing members to the Citizens Advisory Committee for terms beginning January 1st, 2025. Any comments? Any questions? What would you like to do?
Madam President?
Yes.
And it looks like an excellent list of candidates, some really great backgrounds.
I'd like to pose three people.
Okay.
Bradford Olery, Marcia Colb and Hannah Peterson.
And I will second that motion. Any comments? Any other questions?
Is that the full slate that we read? Or is there?
Well, there was one candidate that was seen more focused on that particular lake. Kept coming up in the, in the information that we had. And I know the CAC has been trying to do a much more district-wide focus and so that was why I.
I think they felt they had representation on Lotus because the president of CAC is on that lake.
Oh, okay, so I don't think that was that other person then was in the packet that we got?
Oh, there were all four of them were there. They were all four there, yes. Definitely were.
Okay, I guess I did.
Okay, and any other questions? If not, we have a motion and a second. I would like to hear a vote on resolution 24-068, appointing the three members of the Citizens Advisory Committee, which who are again now, Joe, could you read?
Bradford Olery.
Yep.
Marcia Colb.
Yep.
And Hannah Peterson.
Yes. Yes.
President Peterson, manager Crafton, and would you also like to recommend all returning members?
Yes.
Yes.
Add that to mine.
And I'm very willing to change my second as well.
Okay. Thank you for that.
All right, so all those in favor of the resolution as submitted, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Good, we are now on to item F as item E was pulled. So this would be adopting the resolution to solicit bids for Upper Riley Creek Ecological Enhancement Project.
President Peterson, managers, because of the issues with the agreement for the wait, this is Upper Riley. Yes, because of the issues with the agreement, cooperative agreement with Chanhasan, I don't think it is appropriate to move forward with this at this time until we actually have an agreement secured that, that the managers can look at and vote upon. So I would recommend tabling this to a future meeting.
Okay, and that's item F, which is resolution 24-070. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So we are tabled until the month of probably January, I'm thinking. Correct? Okay.
President?
Yes.
Entertain a motion?
Yes. I'm looking.
I make a motion to table it.
Yes, thank you. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions?
Do the schedule of meetings?
That's next.
Sorry, I couldn't find it, okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to table 24-070. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. None opposed? Next. Now we're looking at the 2025 calendar for the meetings of the Board of Managers. I need a motion.
So I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 24-071.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions or comments?
President Peterson?
Yes.
Managers, I'd just like to take a moment to give you the thought process behind this calendar. With the exception of January, no other first Wednesday of the month fell on a holiday. Now, the July meeting would be July 2nd, but I've never seen it be a big travel time for us, so I felt that it'd be appropriate to leave it there.
I'm not going to say this, I'm not going to miss it.
You're always traveling, though. You're jet setting. December, though, however, this is the one I think the managers really need to consider. Because the Minnesota Association of Watersheds Annual Conference falls in the first week of December, we have moved it to the second week of December. But I think as the getting out of this packet demonstrates, that poses a big issue trying to assemble the packet while up there. So I am recommending to move it to December 17th of that month. The committee. The committee meetings that I have put in, um, we can always, uh, call additional special meetings if we have other things, but I tried to line the audit and finance committee as much as possible with the audits and with the budget cycle. Governance, uh, all goes well, we should be done with most of our business, so, um, put it at the, towards the end of the year when we'd look at IT, uh, disaster planning and the governance manual itself. And then personnel, I tried to mix with when we would be looking at any new hires or, or job, uh, work plans as well as meeting with Ken Carlson at the end of the year. So, um, that's the rationale behind the meeting schedule.
Oh, I have a question on the committee meetings.
Mm-hmm.
What time are they?
So the committee meetings, um, it seems to have been working to do it in the afternoons, a two P M. meeting on those days, so, um, that'd be the second, uh, resolution, um, in there.
Madam President?
Yes.
Like to see if we can move July second to something else.
But it's up to the, the board, don't look at me, I'm, I'm fine with whatever the board decides on this.
Maybe that's not problematic for everybody else. I'm usually on a boat that day.
Don't get Wi-Fi on?
Obama comment, you know?
Will you just move that to the ninth?
Okay, it's just like Wednesday, right in the middle of the week.
I I prefer July second, but that's.
Tom, what's yours?
I don't care.
You don't care?
So what's the fourth?
Okay, either way.
You're okay either way? Well, our other option is to potentially move it back to the ninth. We could move it back to the ninth. Does anybody care about that?
This is the week following.
For everybody else.
Fine with me.
Fine with me.
Yeah, I'd be back by then. Yep, you're okay. Bonnie, is that okay with you?
She's looked at the calendar.
She's looking at.
I can make it be okay.
Okay.
I will be in town on July second, I am definitely sure, and I will probably not be the following week, but that's, I don't have a plan.
President Patterson, managers, I, I would look to Mr. Smith to tell me if I'm wrong. If, if you are setting the calendar, doesn't Esro have to be on a Wednesday? If you would, there is another day that would work better for, for you, so.
You're, you're okay with, okay. Okay, so July ninth.
You will be here?
She's not sure.
We usually leave town after Fourth of July because it's a pain. That's okay. We will be here.
Okay, July ninth, so.
On the calendar, so I think that's what it's intended to be on, on the one you've.
Oh, there it is. It is, it's on the ninth.
That's because we usually do it though.
Okay, so our changes to resolution twenty-four dash zero seven one is December seventeenth for our December meeting, July ninth for the July meeting, two P M. for the committee meetings. Okay.
And President Patterson, managers, to be clear, right now, as it sits, there will be a workshop at five P M. before every meeting, unless the president or the administrator decides there's no business or need to have that workshop.
Okay. Okay, any other comment? No, sounds like we're ready to vote. Uh, do we have a motion? Did somebody move this?
We did.
Okay, we did.
Ziegler and Crafton.
Okay, thank you.
Except, uh, changes.
Thank you.
Me too.
Okay. Okay, so all those who are in favor of adopting the calendar of resolution twenty-four dash zero seven one, please say aye.
Aye.
None opposed? So we are on to item H, which is adopting the revised governance manual.
Oh, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two forty dash zero seven two, adopting the revised governance manual.
Second that.
Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Patterson, managers, um, manager Nelson, or gave me a call and she did have some concern, uh, especially when Avienda was going to be on as a, uh, variance and not having, um, the full packet by Friday to be able to review that. And I think that is legitimate concern. Well, it's been my practice to never try and make someone make a decision on something like that without, um, benefit of having read it. Clearly, it, it is something. Um, what I might recommend for the managers to consider is, um, to, to have some exception, uh, all available materials, all materials available, except that those that fall outside of of written documentation would have to be there by Friday.
Manager Patterson?
Yes.
So mine was more about decision items. I feel like that there's, if we don't have to make a decision, there's still additional time to get information, to see how it works within the rules, to get, you know, talk to manager Sobek if you need clarification or. Um, so my proposal would be that additional materials that are received later than five P M. of the third business day that inform a decision item could be subject to a modified process of Robert's Rules of Order for tabling an item. That, um, may a manager could request that a decision item be tabled. And if you get a second, so it's not just one person tabling it, but if you get somebody else who thinks, yes, I would like it tabled, then two votes would be sufficient to table an item if you meet the criteria of this paragraph. That is my suggestion. I don't know if that's.
All right, do we have any comments?
Let us say all available.
I have one question, did we, did I blackout? Did we resolve to, uh, adopt the new governance manual?
Uh, no, that's what this is. This is for us to a- adopt the revised governance manual because we got it and then it had some revisions to it. And so now we're looking at, um, having it up there. Uh, I think next month we actually would vote for it, yes or no?
No, this is it.
This is it.
This is.
As I noticed last.
That's why we noticed it last month, that was it, sorry about that.
So you first received it on November second.
Right.
Then it was on December fourth, I guess.
And I know we got the marked vision, uh, the marked version of it, and then we got the final version of it. So I, I read through all of that, so.
Yeah, with the red.
So we're not asking for a change to this resolution?
She is.
Hang in requesting a change to the section five meetings, add a couple things, and we have had some additional markup since we first got this last, or clarification. But I, I just, all available materials, and I appreciate that doing their best this month wasn't an example of just really not having time to get everything in. But I would like, if we don't get something in, an easier way to table a decision if we really, as a managers, and somebody seconds it, don't believe we have time to adequately review the information. So that's, that was what I was requesting is a modified process for Robert's Rules of Order for tabling a night, a decision item if the materials are not received by five o'clock on a Friday afternoon.
Okay.
Senator President?
Yes.
So would not that option be available at any given meeting anyhow?
You would need a majority vote of the board.
Majority vote.
To table.
And what manager Nelson is suggesting is just two people. So two versus three.
Correct.
Mr. Smith, you wanted to say something?
I think I just wanted to clarify that point. Robert's Rules of Order does provide for tabling a, a matter for any reason. And, and typically, you know, you know, as a board, you can certainly modify Robert's Rules of Order and you can adopt what manager Nelson is putting forward. The maybe countervailing consideration is sometimes there are matters that have some urgency to them. Uh, and, uh, it may be that a majority of the board, three managers find it urgent and needing immediate, you know, consideration at the meeting, while two would like to defer. But here you would be altering, you know, you would alter from the majority ruled, and you'd allow a, a minority of managers to defer on it. And that's within your authority to do if you wish.
So I'm seeing that you would like to have this as a motion. I think we should do this separately for just this section of it rather than the rest of the governance manual. Am I correct?
Yeah. Madam President, I, I hear this as a motion to amend manager Ziegler's motion.
Right.
So it's an amendment.
Okay. So is there?
We have to vote on the amendment?
Yes, we have to vote on the amendment first. We didn't get, do we get a second? Have we?
Yeah.
We have not gotten a second.
I'll second it.
Okay.
All right, so what exactly are we voting on here, I'm sorry?
So it would be helpful to have the language.
I could write, read the language I wrote up and you could see if that is helpful or not. Additional materials received later than five P M. of the third business day preceding a meeting of the board that informs a decision item are subject to a modified process of Robert's Rules of Order for tabling an item. In this situation, a manager may request that the decision item be tabled. Upon receiving a second, the decision item will be tabled. Two votes are sufficient to table an item that meets the criteria of this paragraph.
Madam President?
Yes.
I, I think that language is clear, we might want to, just fitting it into the governance manual makes some grammatical or other changes, but it, it seems very clear and straightforward as presented.
Okay. Any other questions before we vote on the amendment?
So we have to do this in order to get that language into?
I'm sorry, I did not hear that.
We would have to do this to get the amendment there that would allow two people to put a stop from us voting on something. She's saying two people could table it if it's not all in there by the time we get through it Friday at five o'clock prior to a regular board meeting.
And only for decision items that we don't have the information. And we'd have to also decide, we need more information if it's a simple item. I, you would not.
So.
Not to confuse it too much, but if we had our board meeting on a different day, but, I mean, you know, we've done that on occasion, Monday. So do we want the wording to be?
Uh, three business days.
Business days.
Right. So.
And.
Assistant Madam President? So is this to modi, is, is this to an amendment? If we approve this amendment, then we make that modification on voting for the final draft of the. So we're going to accept the final draft, this is a amendment to the final draft.
President Patterson, manager DuVell, yes, if, if this amendment is approved, it would be incorporated into it, and then our next moat resolution would be to adopt the governance manual as amended by this. If it, if this amend fails, then it would just be to adopt the governance manual as presented.
One more question. So I guess I don't understand. If we have the, if we have the process or the procedure there now, is, it, does one vote make a difference? I mean, is that, I don't understand. If, if there's an issue because of the complexity or some other issue that warrants moving this to another item, it would seem like there would be more than one person to, to persuade. I mean, that, that, that three would be, would go along with that if somebody listened to the objection as to why the material, you know, was, or why you needed more time to review it. So I don't understand, I guess, the difference between two and three votes, I guess, is what I'm saying. I, I think there's a big difference, and the difference is that two people can talk and it doesn't violate the open meeting. Right? So if two managers talk and say, hey, this is bad, we gotta delay it, then this change would allow them to do that.
Madam President?
Oh, yes, Mr. Smith.
I think the, the only setting we're discussing here is at a board meeting where all, where managers are present and a motion is made to table, and if it's seconded under this proposal, the matter would be tabled under the scenario of, oh, the information wasn't available three business days before.
So personally.
The difference is between a minority of the board deciding that and the majority.
Yeah, right. So personally, I think that the majority of the bo, the board should decide whether it gets tabled or not, not just two people. I, I'm sorry, but I just think it's gotta be majority rules.
I agree with that.
I mean, we can still table it.
Yeah.
We just need three people instead of two. All right, so we need to vote on.
Yes, you do have a motion and a second.
Right.
But the motion is for two?
Yes. This is the motion to amend, have two people be able to table. So, uh, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Now it'd be the rest of us.
So that fails. Uh, so now we need to look at adopting the revised governance manual. Now, we have a, a motion on the table for that. Are there any other changes? Nothing that I have heard, so let us.
Manager. I did have one clarification potentially as, um, special meetings. It says may be called by the chair or any manager. Do we need more information on how that's called?
I never have had that happen before, since I've been involved since two thousand and fifteen.
I'm, I'm sorry. There was more to it than that, but.
Special meetings can be called by any member of the board?
We missed the question, I'm sorry.
Bonnie, go ahead and repeat that first.
Section, within the meeting section, it says, special meetings and emergency meetings may be called by the chair or any manager. Notice of a special or emergency meeting will be issued and published by the secretary, et cetera. But there's no procedure for how that's done or, I mean, I could, I don't know how to call it, or I just say, I'd like a special meeting and everybody has to show up?
Madam President, manager Nelson, um, the idea of that policy is that the chair, the board president, or an individual manager can see the need to call for a meeting. The next question is, will a quorum of the board show up at such a meeting? And so what typically would happen when a, a chair or another manager feels that there's a need for a special meeting, you work with the administrator to figure out the feasibility of having a quorum and, and convening. So it, in the implementation is how it's effectively addressed.
It still needs to be noticed, right?
Yeah, and it would still need to be noticed.
But President Patterson, manager Nelson, to your question, so we have had this come up a few times, and what happens is, say it is you, you would call me, say, this is an item we need to get on edge, we need to speak to prior to our next meeting. I would say, great, and then I would coordinate the schedules of the managers to find a time that would meet, meet our, our notification period and meet the schedules to get a quorum. President.
Manager Patterson, so is the process that you would put this out for any item that I say I'd like a special meeting for? I mean, if we're following this hypothesis.
That is, that is correct.
Okay.
You were so inclined to do that.
I, I am not. But I just, it's feels rather open-ended as far as.
Hope you don't show up, we don't do business.
No quorum, no business.
President Patterson, managers, that is the check on it. But if the other managers say, I don't think this, I'm, I'm busy the entire time. So, you know, we don't get a quorum and then there's, and it's just you and I hanging out. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
If there is something urgent coming up, it's a way to just get our attention.
Yeah.
We can decide.
Anything else on the governance manual?
Yes.
Yes.
Manager Patterson, President Patterson. Mr. Jeffrey has just pointed out, there's one other adjustment that I would call a technical correction that was pointed out by manager DuVell. And that is in the, um, section concerning the, um, reporting requirements. This is under the internal controls and procedures for financial management, section of the manual. There is a requirement that the financial report be reported to the Board of Water and Soil Resources and the State Auditers Office, and they both should read, uh, one hundred eighty days. Separately elsewhere in the policy, there's a hundred and twenty days for producing our annual report and sending that off. So there is.
It's page, page sixty-eight, if you look at the clean version. Page sixty-eight, line one thousand nine hundred and fifty-two. And that would be deleted then, that would just be deleted, yes, because it's redundant and was wrong.
Correct. Okay, so are you amiable to amending your? And did you second?
Yeah.
Andrew, okay, are you amiable to, okay. Anything else? Okay.
Just deleting B here.
Correct.
Okay, if not, uh, let us vote on the adopting the. Okay, if not, let us vote on the adopting the Resolution 2024-072 for the revised governance manual. All in favor, say aye. Aye. None opposed. All right, next. This is establishing vendors that may be paid via automated clearinghouse.
President Patterson, Managers, we talked a while back, and this is part of the governance manual that we have a few just ongoing paying of the bills that are listed in the resolution. They are day-to-day, month-to-month operations that, you know, these would still be reported to the managers in the treasurer's report. The same checks and balances, excepting the fact that a check would not be written. So this is rent, utilities, payroll, para, to that nature.
Looking for a motion?
So I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-073, establishing vendors may be paid via automated clearinghouse.
Okay. Thank you, Jill, for the second.
And this should help with the payments on time, the timing issue.
Any questions or comments before we vote? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 2024-073, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, none. Next, we are on to the Permit 2024-078 Extension.
President Patterson, Managers, and Representatives of the End of the Engineer and Representative are here tonight. They have been working with Engineer Sobeck for quite some time on trying to come up with a regional approach to addressing the stormwater management on this site. There are a lot of moving parts, and it is a bit complicated. But we would like to take tonight to present to you what is being proposed by the applicant, get some feedback from the managers, and then we are looking to extend the permit review. So based upon this discussion tonight, we can work with the applicant to come to a resolution that we can bring to the managers and recommend approval for. With that, I would like to turn it over to Engineer Sobeck to walk through that. And again, if you have questions, they are in the audience, available.
Managers, I'm going to walk through this project that has been ongoing and was first contacted with the district in 2016 for the development of this area. And the area we're talking about is south of Lyman Boulevard, east or west of Powers, and then north of Highway 212. Here's up in the little screen here, that red hatched area. This first overall graphic that I have shows some development that's already been permitted by the district and built, some that's been conditionally approved, which would be that area in green. And then the area in the yellowish-orange is the area that we're looking at, and the applicant is requesting approval of our regional stormwater management approach. First thing I'm going to do is just sort of walk through a little bit more of the history and then get into what's being requested for this regional stormwater plan. Again, there's some new managers here that don't have the background. Just wanted to try to get everybody on the same page. So the site, if we look on the left-hand side of the screen, the site was originally basically a farmstead. A house, barn up at the top, lot of fields, wetland complex in the middle, some forest in that southwest corner. And then has the development moved forward? First request that came through was for the construction of a roadway network, masquerading the site in a roadway network through here, which is shown on the right-hand side of the screen. The wetlands were approved by the LGU to be mitigated off-site, filled and mitigated offsites. That's what happened. The roadways are shown. And then there's just masquerading, sort of planning for future development as different portions or interested entities would want to come in. This was conditionally approved in 2018. Again, flipping sort of forward a little bit here, from September of 2018, which now I'm showing on the left-hand side, to June of 2020, there was a requested modification. And the two differences between these plans is primarily some of the roadway was taken out. So that would no longer become public right-of-way. It would be considered part of a private development as it develops going forward. The stars I have up here, I just want to point out at this point, on the left-hand side, the site was believed to be able to allow infiltration to happen, and significant infiltration. So we see all those red stars, those were either permanent infiltration basins, a lot of temporary infiltration areas. Does handle runoff from the masqueraded site prior to development with the idea that those may change as development comes in. As they moved forward with the plan into June of 2020, they were able to consolidate some of those. So you see a lot of the red stars disappeared. Some of those on the right, those basins underneath the stars got a little bit bigger, reorientated. And that was something that was conditionally approved. They then moved forward and were starting construction, did some infiltration testing out there where the basins were proposed for infiltration in 2022, and discovered that the soils were not suitable for infiltration. The infiltration testing at the BMP locations and at the proposed bottom of those BMP locations showing infiltration rates of anywhere between zero and 0.02 inches per hour, which is very low. So at that point, they asked for a modification, switching from infiltration to biofiltration for several of the basins, and then a lot of stormwater, your wet detention basins, in order to get to meet the criteria for water quality and rate control. From an abstraction perspective, they proposed irrigation. And the areas being irrigated are what's shown in the right-hand side of the screen there in the purplish-blue. So they were irrigating essentially all of the green space in the roadway right-of-way as well as the green space associated with some townhome developments. And that was conditionally approved. The roadways have been constructed. Several, most of the townhomes have been constructed. There are a few still under construction. Now, just earlier in 2024, the board conditionally approved the next phase of the development, Phase 3, which would be the construction of row homes in this area that was previously just masquerading. As part of that, they modified an existing wet detention basin and then replaced an existing biofiltration area with an underground chamber system. They are proposing biofiltration, couple of tree trenches with this Phase 3, as well as rainwater harvest and reuse on the available green space within this Phase 3 development. Because Phase 3 is considered part of this larger parcel, they also then checked to make sure that they were meeting your rate control and water quality where the discharge was leaving this site or going underneath Powers Boulevard, which they did meet. Permit was conditionally approved. The applicant is in the process of getting the plat recorded, probably yet this month, and would likely be starting on this effort for this phase sometime before spring. So now we're going to talk about what's being proposed as part of this regional stormwater management system. I've got two graphics up here. The left side shows what I'm calling pseudo-existing conditions. So assuming Phase 1, 2, and 3 are in place, compared to the right-hand side, which is the conceptual layout for the full build-out of the remaining areas. Again, lots of stars appear, lots of different colors. What I'm really trying to convey is that under that pseudo-existing condition, there are a lot of BMPs out there that have already been constructed. Some of them have been declarations recorded associated with Phases 1, 2, and 3. So the roadways, the townhomes, the row homes. Some of them are still those BMPs that were put in place to handle runoff from the masquerading that occurred in this eastern portion of the site. So they're proposing to modify those BMPs, which they had planned to do since day one, to modify those BMPs. And you'll notice, for example, this large basin, wet basin, they're proposing ultimately, when the site develops or this portion gets developed, to replace that BMP, existing BMP, with an underground chamber system to provide for rate control, water quality, compensatory storage, and so forth. The two basins on the east side, they're looking at just replacing with one larger basin and a reuse system. Ultimately, they're looking at providing two new reuse systems, tying into an existing reuse system, as well as using wet detention bases for part of the project. So with that little bit of background, I want to talk about regional stormwater management. It is an option that was incorporated into the regulatory program back in 2018. This is really the first applicant to come through this process and request for a regional stormwater management approach. As part of that regional stormwater management approach, the criteria would be that you have to meet all of the standard stormwater management criteria of the stormwater rule, which is going to mean you need to meet rate control wherever water leaves site. You need to meet your water quality criteria, which is either provide 1.1-inch abstraction or provide 60% total phosphorus removal and 90% total suspended solids removal. And from an abstraction perspective, the requirement is to provide 1.1-inch of abstraction or holding that water on site for a 1.1-inch event off here impervious surface. The regional plan must meet those criteria, must cover all the land within that area. The applicant must provide an annual accounting going forward of the capacity that's been constructed and the land that's been developed or the capacity that's been used. And then they also must demonstrate that a regional stormwater system will not be likely to adverse, is not reasonably likely to cause offsite adverse impacts. Again, I talked a little bit about the proposed regional stormwater facilities on the prior screen, again, just showing them here quickly. I wanted to point out in the lower right-hand corner, we see again that sort of orangey-yellow color around the white. The white would be impervious surface. The orangey-yellow color would be the area that's proposed for irrigation as part of this regional stormwater management system. The other colors in that lower corner, lower image, represent areas for irrigation as part of Phase 1, 2, and 3. So the applicant is seeking approval of a regional stormwater management plan for the three catchments prior to development occurring. Saying three catchments, one being the northwest corner, one being the, called the south portion, and then that larger portion there in the north mid, mid-central area. As part of this regional stormwater plan, they are planning for little over 30 acres of regulated impervious surface on this area. And that would, the remaining area of about 26 to 27 acres would be left pervious, most of which would be irrigated for stormwater reuse purposes. From an implementation timeline perspective, many of these regional stormwater BMPs are proposed to occur at the time of development. So has these areas are sold off to individual developers. As they develop, these regional BMPs would then be constructed to allow these sub-parcels, as I call them, to sort of tap into the system that would be there. With all of that said, they are requesting two variances. The first variance is from providing compensatory storage within the same floodplain as the area that the fill is occurring. And then the second one is related to allowing a variance from the regional stormwater management program that I talked about, meeting all of the criteria, which would require a full 1.1-inch of abstraction to something less than 1.1-inch of abstraction. Just real high level here, just want to highlight the variances that they're requesting. I mentioned earlier, there are several existing wet detention ponds, which are stormwater management facilities that they're proposing to eliminate. As part of that, they're filling the floodplain of those stormwater management facilities. So they will be providing compensatory storage on-site, just not in the floodplain of those BMPs because they're disappearing. As a result, there will be a net increase in flood storage out there. So more storage, floodplain storage than what's out there today, based on this concept that's been presented. And then from the, for the second variance, again, real high level here, just wanted to highlight for a full 1.1-inch of abstraction off of the proposed 37 acres of impervious, that would require 148,739 cubic feet of abstraction volume. What they're proposing is 53,616, leaving a shortfall from meeting the criteria in the regional stormwater portion of the rules. If the board were to consider and allow for restricted sites, the first option in the restricted sites would require you to meet half of that 1.1 or 0.55. I've got that number shown here in the table as well, so that the board can see and recognize that they are below the 74,000 that would be required. 53,600 is proposed, so there's a little bit of a shortfall, which then gets us into that second stage in the restricted site criteria, which is provide abstraction to the maximum extent practicable or doable on your site. Again, they are looking at this conceptual plan of little over 37 acres of regulated impervious, almost 27 acres of pervious area, of which almost 24 acres of it would be irrigated. The remaining areas that wouldn't be irrigated are primarily stormwater wet detention ponds. So I flew through a lot of information here. This has been a very complex analysis going forward. The applicant and their engineer have been really good to work with, very responsive in terms of getting the information, answering questions. In fact, just this afternoon, I got some more information that helps me understand that post-development, they will be able to meet the water quality criteria as well. That was one of the things we were working on yet last week, as of even this morning, so. With that, I'll open it up to questions.
So Scott, why would we approve allowing them to not even meet half of the required abstraction? Why would we do that?
It's a wonderful question. The challenge that we're faced with is the cities have land use authority. They can govern how much imperviousness is on the site. And then from a watershed's perspective, we approach it from, based off of that, how can you best meet this criteria to protect the resource? If this were to come in on an individual basis rather than a regional approach, we would be fighting, having that discussion on each subparcels. And there's a strong likelihood, can't guarantee, again, this, we're talking conceptual, where each individual piece would come in and say, well, look, I'm allowed for 80% impervious. That only leaves me 20%. I can't infiltrate. I can only irrigate 20% of my site. Therefore, I'm only getting 0.2 inches of abstraction. For this regional approach, they are looking at a much larger area, really trying to get as much green space as they can. And I'd also like to add that with this last proposal, there's about 10 less acres of imperviousness with being proposed with this development concept compared to what was proposed back in 2018. proposed back in 2018.
Well, I applaud them for that, but if they did take out more impervious surface, they would be better suited to meet the required abstraction depth. Is that correct?
That would, that would increase the abstraction amount they could provide, correct?
Okay, so what's going to happen if we get four to 10 inches of rain in a period of about four hours on a site like this?
It will fill up the stormwater BMPs and they will utilize their overflows and it will work its way downstream.
So it's going downstream, so we're sending a ton of stuff downstream, because they can't even handle 1.1 inches of abstraction, correct?
President Peterson, managers, they are sizing their stormwater facilities to contain the 100-year rainfall event.
Okay.
So that is 7.4 inches of rainfall within a 24-hour period.
Okay. But that's not-
We're talking storms in excess of 7.4 inches before it would utilize the overflows and so forth.
You mean like we aren't going to be like Asheville, North Carolina, or something like that, right?
I would hope we don't have remnants of our-
Manager Peterson?
Yes.
Question is, is the Chen-Hassan Rec Center that was just approved, how does that fit into this plan? Is that accommodated in this proposal that we're looking at?
President Peterson or Manager Nelson, I'd like to have the applicant address that, if you would.
Sure. Do you want me to just do it from here or do you want?
Where's the mic? Oh, you've got it, okay. I'll quit looking for it then.
Talk show host here. I'm going to stand up here just to point so you can see. So the Chen-Hasson Bluffs facility that was approved in the referendum is proposed to go down in this area here on about 10 acres. So the impervious area is similar and will meet the same requirements. Some of these buildings will change in shape from what they are. It's, the nemesis of a project that's this big and this multi-phased has been that we knew generally what wants to go here, but, but there's like 27 separate projects within this project that are evolving over time. And so, short answer is, it'll go down here and it'll have the same impervious area that we're describing. Instead of a couple of office buildings and a parking lot, it'll be the Chen-Hasson Bluffs recreational facility, which includes a couple sheets ice and a fieldhouse.
Comments?
I said one additional question for the Mr. Avienda. You mentioned that you're going to be irrigating, I don't remember, 20-some acres, but that this was being developed by different people and hooking up as they go. Will the irrigation system be owned and operated by one person?
Everything's a little complicated. The short answer is mostly. So there's, there's three different systems. The, the home areas here, so there's three different, there's the executive homes, the villa homes, and the row homes that are all owned by homeowners when they're done. These are all sold, these are a little more than half sold, and these are just going to get started here. But will be owned by those homeowners. And there's homeowners associations for each of those three that will control their own systems. So they've got their own separate pumps and everything, because it gets complicated when a homeowner has, owns a villa home, and if there's a $400,000 pump that's pumping this whole thing, and when it goes in 10 years, these folks aren't equipped to, to pay for their share of that when that happens. Homeowners don't like surprises like that. And so we've set it up so that the homeowners have three separate systems, but the rest of this is all done under one association. It's like an HOA except for all the businesses. And they, they're, they're big people and can, can contribute to that when, when the pumps need to be replaced and, you know, the larger capital items take place. So mostly, it will be one big system, except for the owner-occupied homes.
So how does it work if they, their pump goes out, they don't have the money to replace the pump or vote not to replace the pump?
Yeah, so they, they reserve for that. You know, they, they set up life cycles for those, those items and they reserve for it. Every, they're reserving already right now for pumps that actually aren't even hooked up yet. They're onsite but haven't been hooked up yet as we're going through that construction process. But they reserve for it and they've got reserve funds and, and these pumps are much smaller and less expensive because they serve smaller areas versus the, the larger magnitude that would serve, you know, larger areas like this.
President Peterson, Manager Nelson, going back to our earlier conversation about maintenance declaration versus maintenance agreement, there will be declaration recorded against that property that the district can then rely on to compel compliance with it.
And it already is for the, the developments that have already been put in place.
Do you have a question?
And President, so I think Minister Jeffrey, you mentioned that, or somebody mentioned that the city has approved this project in, in its entirety, and are we in the process then of trying to figure out how to satisfy our requirements within the framework that's already been approved?
President Peterson, manager, I don't know where you're at. Did you get preliminary plat approval on this?
So we've got, there's a, a planned unit development that's been, that approves all of these uses within this project, nothing that we're showing. Chen-Hasson Bluffs may require a PUD amendment, but I think the city will-
From the city.
For themselves, you know, for that project. But everything else is already approved in the zoning, and then we've been going through plaits as each phase comes together. And, and really, the whole thesis for the regional stormwater is, on individual permits, we can meet the lower numbers, and then by doing things like tree trenches and the rainwater reuse irrigation, we're doing everything that we can to get as much infiltration as we can, knowing that we've got very clay soils, right, and they, and they don't infiltrate. And so a bunch of individual permits would be allowed to go through. The nuances with, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm the least expert in the room probably on this, but the, the nuance is that the regional permit doesn't allow for that same exception that the individual permits would have. But we think for our development, but also for the best quality of stormwater treatment for this site, the regional approach will, will treat the water, will, will treat more water and infiltrate more water, and we'll, we'll end up with a better result for everybody. The math shows that that would be the case.
So the short answer to your question is, yes, we are, they are doing their best to comply with our standards, given the approved development that is out there.
So the problem basically got pushed to us from the city. City, using their rules and requirements, said, we're, we're okay with this, keep moving. And now we've been sort of given the figure out how to do it phase of it.
I, I, I don't want to appear that I'm advocating one way or other, but he has pointed out, and Jair Sobek did as well, there are a number of benefits that are gained from this. One even goes to your point, if we only have one larger system that is controlled by a singular entity, it's a lot easier than having 13 different BMPs and trying to do that. The one question I should have actually posed during design is, the only, the largest concern I have is, as each parcel develops, if they don't follow the development plan, how do we avoid getting that one last parcel that now has to make up for, you know, everything that happened prior to that? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I mean, my understanding is that there's a, a running tally, if you will, of where we're at with the amount of stormwater, and that it needs to correlate with the percentage of acreage that has been, that we're developing each time. And if, if for some reason, one of the earlier projects didn't meet its requirement, then we would need to modify and add additional accommodations to, to make that work. We can't, well, theoretically, we could pin ourselves into a corner where we just couldn't develop the last part of the site, but that wouldn't be, you wouldn't allow that, and that wouldn't be approved on our-
Okay. Manager Peterson?
Yes.
So by approving the regional stormwater, then that becomes a commitment, a contract of sorts, to meet that 0.55 and not go the individual route, like we got to the end. As you say, if you painted yourself into a corner, that you would change your approach?
Yeah, I think it's-
Is that what I'm-
Maybe tied. I think it's less than the 0.55, because we tried to do the 0.55, and then if you can't, then you do it to the best extent practicable, which is where we do things like tree trenches and stormwater reuse for irrigation. And all of those measures are what we're doing to, to do things above and beyond, to be able to infiltrate as much as possible, knowing that geological conditions don't really allow for much infiltration.
Yes.
And President Peterson, so the Atlas 14 requirements, has that been integrated into that? That's the 100-year current standard?
President Peterson, manager, yes. And then- 14 has been used for all the rainfall analysis.
And that, and I understand from recent workshops that Atlas 15 is about to be approved? So, so I'm just curious, again, this is, so the workshops that we've been attending up north last week and others over time, we've been, we've been seeing like the city of Edina, how they've dealt with problems that were done by developments that were not fully vetted and, and in terms of the extreme measures they've had to go to, to deal with, somewhat what we're talking about here. I'm just wondering how that factors into the planning and the development of this whole concept. You, you've said you, you're meeting the current standards, but I think we're in a time period where the current standards are looking pretty wobbly. And I know you can't build things on that basis, and what you're talking about here seems like it's been probably planned out more than most developments. But how do, how do we, how do we deal with that notion if there's the 100-year plan that this has been built to now is outdated next, next six months or the next year, because now the 100-year plan requires 10 inches?
President Peterson, manager, I let him answer. I, I would like to point out a few things. Even if we were to use new data from Atlas 15 or take the mid-century storm from Atlas 14, use some other metric, we would still be looking at just a 1.1 inch infiltration. So that wouldn't change that. Where that becomes an issue is, can the conveyance system handle all of that? Do we have enough storage onsite within the pond? Is there enough live storage to handle them all? So it wouldn't change meeting our criteria if we were to use Atlas 15 or mid-century storm. That said, that doesn't minimize your concern, and this might be something to add to that list we had talked about earlier. We do not look at conveyance right now. That, we just, that's the city's, we're not an MS4 authority, so kind of stay away from that.
In the cases of the examples I've seen in, in the last year or so, I mean, the cities have spent multi-millions of dollars to correct the issues that were not fully vetted by the original developers in projects that probably were less complex, less complex than this. Just, just a comment, I guess.
So we're vetting.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
So in phases 1, 2, and 3, we didn't have to grant a variance, right?
President Peterson.
Is that right or no?
That's correct. Variances were, were not granted for, for abstraction. It wasn't a regional system. Going off memory, I think Phase 1, they were able to meet the criteria. Phase 3, they were able to meet the 0.55 inch abstraction, so it was considered a restricted site, right? They had infiltration tests that showed you really can't infiltrate. Land cover was in there, so they were able to squeeze out enough area to get to 0.55.
So that was not a variance, but it was a restricted site for-
Correct.
Phase 3.
Story is-
I think, I think what I'm seeing is that they're trying to do the very best that they can with the site that they're on, and we are just going to have to accept that it's going to be a shortfall for what we would normally accept if we had an applicant come to us.
Or we can say, reduce the-
Reduce the impervious surface that you have. Is there anything that you all can do?
Asking me?
Yeah.
I, I don't believe so. I think we've done everything that we can to, you know, to, it's a regional site, the city has identified this, you know, as, as the new freeway highway went, went in with New 212. And ahead of that, the city was trying to identify a site to have a regional development along that. And this was the, the property that was identified for it because of its access to transportation right at the exit of the 212. And so that, this level of density, of course, doesn't occur all up and along the freeway. It's, it's just, this is a 120-acre site, of which that, that bottom corner, the 23 acres, was deeded back to the city in a conservation easement and, and actually was deeded to the city, not conservation, but it's permanently protected, wooden bluff there that, that will remain. But the rest of it ends up being, you know, densely developed on, on this, you know, sort of 83 acres, palpable area here. You may have different numbers for your calculations, but that's sort of what we, that we, what we use. And it's, it's a, it's a dense area.
President?
Yeah, something incorrect from Rob, but if, if Level 7 were to construct the entirety of the remainder of the development under one singular project on its own, this wouldn't be seeking variance for the abstraction criteria, because we would fall under the maximum extent practicable. It wouldn't be that. We're getting the same yield out of the project, but because the, the sequencing of the development doesn't favor Level 7 to construct all in one, thus, that's why we're seeking the stormwater approach. But we would have the same, the same end result.
Mr. Smith, you had some-
I had a question for the engineer to describe if there is a timing risk of allowing development to proceed depending upon a future stormwater treatment facility that, what are the risks of it being built and/or not? And how, how is that being addressed?
Managers, as, as part of the, the regional stormwater plan, there needs to be that annual accounting of how much is available and how much has been used. The idea of that is, you can't go negative, meaning that you need to at least construct the BMPs prior to the development or in conjunction with the development. So you couldn't go ahead and develop, say, that whole northeast corner with none of these BMPs. You'd have to at least, so that you show you're meeting the criteria as you're moving forward.
So, so what is the timeframe for the ultimate build-out?
That's a good question, yeah. Yes, the, the partners that own the project, it was a couple of years ago, but, you know, in all seriousness, significant components will, will go forward this year is our plan. The, the sports facility with Chen-Hasson, the apartments at the center of the site, we've got a purchase agreement with the developer. There's a, the, the significant portion of the retail that's shown there would start later in 2025 before fall, probably kind of mid to late summer. So I would say, you know, two-thirds of the, between half and two-thirds of the remaining land would start sometime in 2025, and then over the next probably three years thereafter, finishing out the, the last remaining pieces. But it's been tricky. We've got, we've got a bank, a local community bank, that has a purchase agreement to buy a little less than two acres and wants to do their site. And they were trying to make heads or tails of coming in for their stormwater permit. And with the complexities that, that we're talking about, it, it, it's almost impossible for them to come up with an application that, that makes any sense. And it's just a, a small typical project that would go in, whereas if we do it on a regional basis like this, and as, as Steve indicated, we get the same result that you would have, probably done in a better quality way, because it's done as one big system. But it makes it much easier for everybody, for you to, the watershed district to administer, and for the applicants that come in with their individual building. Some of them will be owned by Level 7, the, the project overall developer, but other projects will be owned by the individual entities, you know, the city of Chen-Hasson own part of it, the, the apartment developer own part of it, the bank will, but all be operated under one master association.
Yes. Manager Craft.
So what's the liability that there's going to be wet basements?
Yeah, there, there aren't any basements. There will be a level of parking below the apartments that, that will be subgrade, but that's, that's about it. The, the Chen-Hasson Bluffs facility, at least the current concepts, it's sort of built into the hill. At, you know, at one point, there was conversation about a significant retaining wall down there along the freeway to make a big flat site. We've tried our best to avoid that. You can see that we've shown here, office buildings that also could be built into the hill where they've got two different elevations on the north and the south, because there's significant gray- because there's significant grade drop. And that's where the, the ice rigs, for instance, have, I think, 50 foot tall, you know, Florida ceiling. And you'll enter them at midpoint, you know, so it'll be about 25 feet is what it'll look like from, from Bluff Creek Boulevard. Then the other side will be 50 feet built into the hill. So.
Like Chaska.
Managers, the other thing I would add related to low floors and wet basements. The applicant did provide, again, a conceptual analysis showing that they would be able to provide two feet of freeboard from the hundred year high water elevation to the low floor elevation.
President Peterson.
Yes.
Managers, while this should not necessarily be a criteria for making a decision. I do want to point out that just the first phase 2018, there were 11 submittals. There are, that's about average for each of these. So the amount of time and effort engineer Soviet and legal are putting in on it. It is a, a consideration. And, and if it were each individual perimeter views, it wouldn't be any easier. The submittals wouldn't be any simpler. It would just be more of them.
And along those lines, going forward, this, what we're looking at here is, is a potential approval of the regional stormwater management plan. As each one of these individual pieces would come in, they would then need to at least apply for erosion control and show that they're tapping into this regional system that's there to provide the, the treatment and rate control that they're needing.
So you're going to be looking out to make sure that the last one that comes into, to us is in effect going to be able to do what they're supposed to be doing. Is that correct?
That is the plan. Yes.
So I see this as listed as consider approval for the permit. There's no resolution.
President Peterson, managers.
Extension, don't you?
Change that. This is right now looking for guidance that this is a direction you would like them to pursue. And then you're just making a motion to extend the review period so that we can work through these final things and bring something back to the board to consider.
So do I have some sort of motion from anybody or?
I'll move.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second.
So the motion in the second is to extend the review period?
For the permit. Yep.
Andrew Solback, how long, Steve, how long do you think?
Extend for 60 days.
60 days.
Any other questions?
So you'll have some.
All right.
Information?
We have a motion. Yes.
I had one question, which is sort of aside, but did you consider green roofs at all?
Yeah.
We did. There may be some areas where they get used. It, it really depends on the individual developments. It's, it's tricky to do it. We, we talked about having that site wide. And for instance, we're working with a grocer, right? There's well, the anchors of the project will be a grocery store with the refrigeration equipment and things that they have. It's just they do it. Anything can be done, but it's, it's highly impractical to do that there. The individual homes, it's very difficult, you know, to, to have those homeowners do that. It'll be interesting to see if the city of Chan Hassen attempts to do that with some of theirs. We're also in talks with the, the apartment developer about whether they're green roofs or whether there's amenity areas that can be planted with, you know, that so that they're not just all solid impervious roofing systems on. So we're doing our best to incorporate it within the market that's out there as well and making sure that people can, you know, that afford to do projects.
Good comment.
President, another, one more question. So what in the third bullet up there, what kind of work is anticipated to be done in this time period? Revisions and review process, what what are things that are still being actively decided upon, I guess? What that last bullet, what's going to be done in the next time period?
Peterson, manager of all, one example is the water quality analysis. Time I did this, pulled this presentation together, we were still working with the engineers to work through the water quality. There were some of the criteria that there were some shortfalls. So they were still making some revisions. So this is really to go through and cross all the eyes, you know.
Crossing your. Not all the tea.
Got it. Yep. So really just to make sure that as we go through it, we're solid in that when we come back and present something. Not only engineering wise, but legal wise, we've got the, the coverage in there so that treated you go is in there. Things like that. Just want to make sure it's all.
President Peterson, manager of all, yeah, that last point, I would like to have an agreement that we can bring to the board at that time as well. Not just, that we'll, we'll come up with an agreement. I would like to have that agreement in place for that meeting.
Well, I know that we would very much appreciate you scrutinizing as much as you possibly can. Cause we're not just worried about you. We're worried about all the other people downstream who are going to be getting all of the water that is coming off of your site. So thank you. Okay. So I think we need to vote. All those in favor of extending the permit review time by 60 days, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Okay. Alrighty. Next is task order 036B for marginarian to conduct a phase two environmental site assessment. I think this might be on the site that's got all the trash and the, who knows what it is.
President Peterson, managers, you will have received a memorandum from Smith Partners. What I would like to do is talk to you tonight. We, we met the last meeting and discussed as I met with the property owner. This site is, is the Bluff Creek channel. We do know that there is a promiscuous farm dump on it. But my experience from the ESA is that I've done that, that risks associated with promiscuous agricultural dumps tend to be lower but are never zero. So there is liability associated with it because we do not own the property. We cannot enroll in the VIC program, voluntary infection and cleanup program through the PCA. So we would need to have the property owner do that. There is discussion about if we could do the storage elsewhere and avoid this. In my walking of the channel with the property owner, there is definitely less debris the closer you move to the headwater wetland. But there is debris. I do not believe that we would find a spot in that channel. That doesn't mean there isn't somewhere else entirely. The, the question I think before the managers tonight is the risk benefit analysis of, of moving forward. The minute we go into phase two and disturb that area and encounter the materials, we become liable for it, which is why we would have the homeowner enroll in the VIC program.
So if they enroll in that, what, how does that help?
They would have to enroll in the VIC. How does that help?
We would be in an agreement with them to indemnify us.
Correct. Correct.
So the watershed would be indemnified from being responsible for the waste.
From what we find there, yes. Yep. And.
But indemnified from the state as well?
They would be in the VIC program. We would be indemnified.
Can I speak to?
Yes.
Yeah.
The, the state can, if it wishes, go after a party that is disturbing the land and and condition. So there's no guarantee that the state wouldn't come after the district. The district can only seek its protection by working with the landowner to go in the VIC program and the landowner exchange indemnifying the district.
That's what I agree.
That's the only protection we would have.
So it seems to be.
It's what we have.
It's what we gotta do. So looking for a motion.
What do we call it?
Task order 036B.
Madam President?
Yes.
If, if, along with the authorizing that amendment to the task order, if you would consider the three recommended actions in the memo that we sent, which I will just read.
Go ahead.
Which is that your authorization be conditioned on board approval of a draft land use agreement with the property owner that one describes and provides for authorization and cost of the work. Two, requires the owner to enroll the property in the MPCA voluntary cleanup programs to secure a liability of a letter of liability assurance. And three, indemnifies the district from liability for, from any pre-existing condition of the property, including but not limited to contamination.
Thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve task order 036B conditioned on the three items that legal just listed.
Great. So we need to identify that it's like the December 10th, 24 memo or you need to, or just the ones that you read?
Well, because the person who's doing our minutes can hear everything and has all of our written documentation. I don't, yes. He's just read them. It's all to her already. So.
Can you repeat them again for the record?
They're right here if you want to read them.
So let me reword my motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve task order 036B with the following conditions. First condition describes and provides for the authorization. Wait, that's three?
identifies for authorization and costs of the work. Two, requires the owner to enroll the property in the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency's voluntary cleanup program or programs to secure a letter of liability assurance. Three, indemnifies the watershed Riley Purgatory Bluff Creek Watershed District from liability for any pre-existing condition of the property, including but not limited to contamination.
I believe we need to further amend that to proceed with it should be conditioned on presentation for board approval, a draft land use agreement with the property owners that includes those three actions.
Okay. Sounds wonderful. You're in agreement.
I'm in agreement.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Do we have a second? I'm looking for a second. Okay, second. There we have it. All right. All those in favor of the very long task order with the three items and the other change, say aye please. Aye. Opposed? None. Good. So we are on to the discussion items. Do we need to adjourn? What do we need to do? Mr. Smith?
Madam President, for items eight, A and B, we have no need to go into closed session at this time unless the board has any questions. But we have no news to present now.
Okay. Okay. Which leaves us to manager reports. Does any one of the managers have any comments they would like to make?
I have a couple of things.
Okay, go ahead.
So.
Put together some of my notes in a better form than I usually take them and.
Than your maps?
Been experimenting a little bit along the way. So there were about there were about 40 topics at the watershed, Minnesota watersheds last week, different work sessions, something in that area. I attended about 10 and I made comments on three of them that I took notes. I took notes on all of them, but it was three I just wanted to mention. And the first one is relates to new tools to support stormwater management and HOAs. I think this fundamentally ties into almost everything we've talked about this evening, including the workshop. It was an excellent panel put on by Washington Carver or Conservation District and and Browns Creek Watershed District and sort of in that eastern metro area along the St. Croix. Just a couple of comments on it. There is approximately seven, a little bit less than 8,000 homeowners associations in the state of Minnesota. And that represents about 30% of all the homeownership in the state. It has some connection to a homeowners association. And that ties directly into how we're dealing with infiltration subjects with runoff, storm drains. And, and I did a little more digging on this to see that about 80, almost 85% of, 83% of the new homes constructed in the U.S. are subject to homeowners associations now. So again, it kind of ties into everything that we're doing, I think, from my perspective. And at the watershed, this is how we get at these groups that go beyond one house at a time because this is part of the governing body that's, that's dictating how one of the key services that the homeowners associations do is take care of everything outside, including the land and, or the irrigation, the land, the trees, et cetera. So this, this, my notes here just highlights some of the issues in dealing with homeowners associations. And they're pretty much of an unruly, unorganized body around the country. And, and I think they're sort of at an opposite end of the scale of some of the processes.
You went on the tour of the preserve though, right?
Yes.
See, that's one, that's one that's done exemplary.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's just gorgeous. And Liz has been working hard to try to date.
Absolutely. And I'll just pass this around. This is, this group has put together a series of pamphlets in terms of how to talk to homeowners associations. Just pass it around and take a look at that.
By the way, the young woman that wrote that is someone who applied for our CAC and we approved this evening.
Yep.
Savannah? She is.
So. Let's take advantage of that.
So anyway, I think, I think this is a, a really big opportunity for the watershed to figure out how we can work this into our tenure plan, into EHPAP. And, and it has, it has a lot of issues, but I think as a watershed, we might be the organization to figure out how to tie some of those things together. And part of it is, is a legal issue of, of what happens to homeowners rights versus what, what control the homeowners association has. So even talking about the grants earlier today. You know, so we, we might have a embankment that a homeowners association owns, and that's easy to, to deal with from the watershed point of view. But when it comes time to try and deal with some of these issues with the individual owners, we have this overlap of homeowner association homeowner association rules with the individual homeowners. And so there's a whole gap in there. Anyway, I think it's a, it's an obstacle that we ought to turn into an opportunity. And, and we have a group in the metro area that's already started to deal with it. So one more sheet here. This is one on the building resilience, a framework for climate action in the Minnehaw Creek Watershed District. And that presentation was phenomenal. James Whisker was talking, again, the key issues are something that we're talking about it right now, but it was also the, the overlap of how you, how we need to partner with all the different organizations to develop plans that don't just go to our border of our watershed and stop. There's overlap and there's areas that we need to think about how we can connect. His, his key thing was understand and predict, convene and plan, measure, implement and adapt.
Just as an aside, since you're talking about James and the way he's walking out after that maybe at some point. He said, how many years have you been talking to me about soil health? And I said, about five. He said, I'm starting to finally get it. And so I had asked him about factoring and transpiration and some of those things into this model. He's getting, talking to NASA and NOAA and USG, I mean, everybody else. So I was trying to bring that water cycle into that. So we'll see where it goes. They haven't, Brian hasn't pulled that together yet. Anyway, I got to kick it.
And you have another one.
And the last one. And this is, I didn't attend, attend both of our watershed districts presentations, but the one I did was, was Zach and Rachel talking about the soil health program. Again, I think all these things are connected. And I think they did an excellent, excellent job at the, in the presentation, talking about the areas that they were considering studying, going into the great detail. the areas that they were considering studying, going into the great detail about the measurements they were taking. Then again, linking it into what we're trying to do as a watershed. And I think these are, these fundamentally connect at all kinds of different levels. And it was, it was good. The whole program this year, from my perspective, was the best that I've attended. And I'm not sure exactly why that is, but it seems like there's common themes that are, that are going throughout. And, and Louis, he was exemplary also in his usual presentation about how all the watersheds work or don't work and how it's evolved over time. So that's always refreshing to hear that.
Well, Louis mentioned that it was his thirty-third year of joining the presentation.
You sleep.
Well, Tom, thank you so very much for jotting down all of the notes from the three really good presentations we had. Any other manager comment?
I just have one quick thing, thing. After, at the end of the conference, voted in a new president for Minnesota Watershed. Brad Kramer.
What do you, I don't remember.
Sorry?
Which watershed district was it with?
Down or up or the?
The Shell Rock?
Yeah. So one of the comments that one of the other directors had was this gives us some, you know, the president can only be in one watershed, right? So by, you know, having a different president every few years, you get more coverage around the state. So, and our previous president was in the Red River Valley. So we talked a lot about drainage. Very, but it is isolated to farmland, which, you know, does cover two of our regions. You know, just not the metro area, or at least not much. So anyway.
The election was a little anticipated, to say the least. And, and there's not a lot of, but I think Jan's providing us such excellent leadership.
Oh, she's been great.
She's just, and, and part of it's her balance. It's like, this isn't just about one area of the state. We've got it inclusive. So she's doing an amazing job. I think we need to, at some point, talk about the sequencing of what we just looked, heard and talked about because it would be good to get, and maybe Scott's the one to do it, is how do we anticipate ahead of time? I mean, I've seen that coming on different things. I've, I brought it up recently. Okay, so you're going to create a restricted site next time and are we going to deal with it? So how do we, how do we look forward? Is there any kind of education or ways, things that you could talk to us about at some point in a workshop or someplace? So we have a way to even start to think about it so we're not just boxed in. Part of the problem, we know, is the city. If the city tells them they can do it, then we got a problem.
President Pedersen, Manager Craft, I was, as I was speaking, and I didn't want to bring it up because I didn't want to have the argument here, but I think when we look at our rules, one of the things we definitely need to look at is, right now, we say, did they make an effort to open up as little land as possible? You know, the question that maybe should have been asked is, well, why did it all of a sudden not have adequate infiltration? And I think the answer is obvious to anyone who looks at it. You took, what, four hundred thousand cubic yards of material, turned it over, ran bulldozers over it. Yeah, it's not going to infiltrate anymore. So I, I think we need to look at, you know, when we talk about soil health, we need to look at an entire soil management plan. How are you grading the site? Where are you stockpiling? How are you taking care of that stockpile? Et cetera, et cetera. Because in a way, they did create their own restriction by the mass grading of the site.
How do we anticipate?
I mean, the, the other thing, Terry, that I would add is the, the current regulatory program has a lot of rate policies, but there's a lot of promote green infrastructure, promote working with, you know, the land. You know, you look at a land, there's lots you can do on the land, but is there any way to do more than just promote? Had they worked with the land, not had to do the mass grading.
Right.
Infiltration, some of the rates they measured on the surface were reasonable. So there's that balance that we need to come up with. And Jill, this is getting to your sequencing and looking ahead. Looking ahead, for me, it's how do we get out in front of not just promoting something?
That's why.
Like, what is your sequencing step? Sort of like the WACA sequencing, right?
Yeah, but also if we restore that ecosystem vitality, resilience, I mean, that's gotta be part of the process, I think. It's just.
For me, restoration is a, a more of a last.
Ditch effort.
Ditch effort. First, it's avoid impact.
Oh, right, that, but.
So don't grade the whole site.
Right.
But the problem is, is that we've gone from ten percent runoff to fifty-five percent based on the charts we have. So we're way out here. We gotta find a way to get back. So that's what I mean is, do we start trying to require more resiliency on the landscape in order to reverse some of that so that there's a, there's a balance? I mean, you can't put this much impervious without having, if we don't recharge the groundwater, what's going to happen to our creeks and lakes and rivers and stuff? So, I mean, that's the other part and the, and the aquifer. So for me, soil health has just enlarged my whole lens and look filter of looking at water and the water cycle and how it all works together. It's not just surface perky.
So on this other site where they haven't touched it yet, it, it still has some bad stuff in its history, but from the road construction. But it's got trees that are thirty, forty years old and vegetation all over the whole thing that's that age as well. Now, is it all good? A lot of it is ash trees. Well, you know, those are probably going anyway. But you don't have to mass grade the whole thing to do their project.
And even with the compaction that for the twenty years or twenty-five that it has sat follow, it has put tilt and organic matter back in the soil. It has had root penetration. So there are things that are going to be lost either way. Manager Nelson actually brought up something that we struggle with, with doing reviews. So when you asked him if green roofs are considered, that's kind of that line that we walk up to, but we never push it saying that's your maximum extent practicable. Have you looked at doing that? Because that does jump into an entirely new economic category. So if it is something, I mean, if the managers wanted us to come up with a finite list of you must look at all of these things, period. And you must demonstrate why you can't do that. Aldi Store and the Venue Apartments was a great one. We asked them, you know, would you look at putting in a green roof? They, they came back and their answer was, well, Aldi doesn't want us to have one. Did you, did you, you know, how did that conversation go? So.
I was at a PPA, Perennial Plant Association Convention this month, or this summer. And it was in Asheville. And what I found was that people that were in the southern part of the United States that are looking at floods all the time are way ahead of us in terms of how much, how practical, what people have to do to be able to get a building put in. Green roofs down there, they have people, that's their whole income, is they do nothing but green roofs for big buildings. And they have to because they've got such flooding problems that, that they, as Terry said, there's a list and that's on the list. And if you don't do that, you're not getting the permit. So.
And, and it doesn't always have to be a structural green roof. Look at Prior Lakes Water Treatment Plant. They built it into the hill. It's not a grid of, it's just in the hill. So there are other ways around it.
Stabilizing it. So one of the things I was wondering about, stuff that we've been passing. So we're diverting water into wetlands. And I know there's a way to figure out the capacity of the wetland, right? There should be a limit on how much. I mean, you're, we're just looking at bouncing and holding it. But what about all of the other functional ecosystem type things? We're not, so is there a way for, for Zach or somebody to look where that, when the wat, when the wat? We've passed something, we've approved it, but what else is in the water that's going into that wetland? According to this lovely bar thing.
In terms of other pollutants?
Yeah. Have, heavy metals, there's all kinds of stuff. So can we expand our protection for a wetland beyond just bouncing?
These are the things that we'll, we'll need to discuss. Because the, the other part is, all right, if we say that right now there's an acre and a half, an acre foot and a half of storage in that wetland, and then we know that we're discharging whatever, two thousand yards of sediment to that wetland every year, and we really say that there's an acre foot and a half of storage in there over time.
But I'd like to know too, if, if there's any way to detect some of this other stuff that's going into it.
And then once it's detected, who's going to clean it? If the sediment continues to pile up and the wetlands you're using for storage, who's responsible?
It's part of what the regulatory, this is a BMP. You can do that. So how do we reverse that?
The regulatory program requires treatment prior to discharging to a wetland.
Oh, good.
And that is in the current regulatory program.
But it seems.
First and suspended solvent. It doesn't look at nitrogen. It doesn't look at heavy metal.
That's my point.
It doesn't look at microplastic. Doesn't look at PFAS. I mean, those, and these are all discussions I'm looking forward to having with the board in terms of, are we looking at the right pollutants? How far, what, I mean, there's an infinite list, right? But what can we manage? What can we really mitigate?
And are there, and are there surrogates that we can use in lieu of looking at, you know, because some of those in reviews, we get extremely involved. So is there a surrogate out there that we can?
I, I had brought up to Katrina Kessler that I don't like mids anymore, that I didn't think it was adequate. So she put me in touch with Todd Smith and we had a really good conversation. And he said he'd be glad to come back and be part of conversations as we looked at, at what we're trying to do to mitigate or whatever. So I think we should invite him as we start down this path to try to talk about that. Because they should be, I mean, they're, they're monitoring for PFAS. I mean, they should be, make sure that we're not polluting, seems to me.
Okay. Any other manager comment? Yes.
I just had a quick comment. I, we've talked about connecting with our local governments and legislators. So I just wanted to mention that I did go to the December ninth Chan Houston City Council meeting workshop where they discussed the contract for the Upper Riley Creek Ecological Enhancement Project.
Two days ago.
That was two days ago. Yes. And it was about the proposed cooperative agreement that they've been working on for quite some time now. And, but it was just really interesting to hear the discussion and how they got to the decision that they came to. And it could potentially help inform how we work with them on similar issues in the future. So that it was, I will say that they've mentioned several times, they, they very much noted that I was there.
Well, thank you for taking, and I was going to say, you know, having been up at the convention, I felt like watching us versus watching many of the other watersheds, we got a lot of good stuff going on. We do. And we have people that are like interested in talking to one another and trying to figure out what to do. That's wonderful. I think a lot of the other watersheds have people that don't talk, they don't converse. It's a very separate thing. And I, I just felt very good leaving there. And I felt like we had representation Bowser Board with our delegates. And so I wanted to thank everybody who represented us in those functions as well because it's all part of it, you know? Wonderful.
It seems to me that a lot of watershed districts are doing storm ponds. But then there are other people like Tim Kelly. They're looking at, they're looking at relationships with their cities. I mean, that was part of the conversation I had. We were looking at their ten-year plan at Bowser. But it seems like more of them are realizing what we've been doing isn't necessarily working. And, and the rules, you can't write a rule that's going to cover everything. So it's the relationships and that's where Terry's been crucial and Scott's been at the table with him, trying to talk through some of those things. So I just, I feel like we're blessed.
Okay, so everybody, please remember you need to get your feedback form back to Terry for the strategic planning workshop. You want it by Friday.
Yeah, it's just online. Once you're done with it, it'll go through and then we'll synthesize all the data.
I already did.
No, no, we, we had this whole list of everything that we put together. We talked about, but the question.
You need to figure out where you're coming from, Jill. You're always down here. We need to get back here. We can't go seven years old. We're not on the same.
I did the, sir.
I printed it out.
I printed it out and started working on it. I'm going to get more. So it'll be interesting when we get.
First question, it was like, nothing I put down because do anything to affect my family. Anyway, I thought it was curious, okay.
All right, everybody. So we see each other next week, noon to three, Tuesday, Thursday, right?
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday, noon to three.
Tuesday, two to five.
Yeah. Oh, that's, yeah. All right. I think that I would entertain a motion to close our meeting.
Can't she just adjourn? You can just say, if you feel the agenda's been covered.
We've, we've covered the agenda. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. And stay warm going home. I'm sure it's one degree or something now. No, it's zero.